Yeah, you can see.
And then you must.
You want to try it?
Yeah.
All right, we'll call the work session over in eight oh seven. Please silence your cell phones and stand to the project leader.
The project leader faces with the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Russia stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to one happening Thursday. Michael may take it away.
Thank you, sir. Sorry for the little bit of a delay. I'm still not entirely sure what's happening here, but this HDMI port is going to want to play next week. So what I was going to bring up in front of you is the reminder of where we're at from a budget summary standpoint. As we have a ever shortening window of time before December nineteenth. And my key takeaway, as I started putting together a presentation for the nineteenth yesterday, is clear direction or as clear as possible direction from the board. Where you would like to land in terms of a total levy impact. And there are a couple of things that in particular key into that. One being the conversation you started the last time we were together with the return of surplus dollars from Min Prairie. Another item being capital infrastructure project for twenty twenty four. Again, something I was and and the place for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for levy. That's levy, appreciate.
Oh, so it's working now?
Oh, for about five seconds.
It's just that by pure coincidence, I may have in my car the kind of court you I was going to offer it if it were useful.
I appreciate it. I've tried a couple of different ones right now. I think it's the port itself, not the court at this. Thank you, Deb. And then I was going to get into the other actual implications for the grant program for the eighty nine hundred application as well for the lower level of the community services building. Remembering that even though it's an eighty twenty match, the local mesh implication of that is still up to four hundred thousand dollars. If the full two million dollar project cost were submitted, I don't think it would be, but I'm just talking in terms of maximum possible allocations. There are other funding implications or revenue sources potentially that money could come from. It's not as though it's a dire thing to think through for the twenty twenty four budget. Something that I wanted to go through regardless as it ties in ultimately to the overall friendliness factor maybe of the discussion. If maybe is it possible to continue the conversation from the Min Prairie dollars to talk to several of you individually about it? And can I bring that discussion back to this space and figure out exactly what the feeling is going forward? And just to quickly summarize, what I was hearing are the main discussion points of this is whether or not those dollars are left in their own special revenue fund or they're consolidated into a general fund fund balance. Commissioner Kristofferson was asking about the finalized twenty twenty two audit. I do have a digital version of that, which again, I realize is not very useful to you at the moment. Just as a quick sidebar, that will be done by Monday evening. This is here the last time to get done was the door and the county topsy finished up yesterday. So probably had a chance to peek in there. There we go. So what is the board's wish ultimately how do you see those Min Prairie dollars treated in the current fiscal year versus the following fiscal years?
Yeah. Commissioner Kralzian, I talked a bit of our PNC subcommittee meeting about whether I would go just into the general fund. I have I can see the simplicity of it or putting it into a same having to go back into the general fund. But then I think there needs to be a policy. That's why I was wondering where the twenty two we bought ended up on our general. Because if we're at forty plus percent, we just throw that something sixty thousand in the general fund and not show any coming back this year. To me, there's still needs to be some kind of a policy here, way to track it. And that it just doesn't get put in there for other projects.
So can we track that if it goes in the general fund?
Well, what do you mean by tracking that? So I mean, at some point.
A side note of a side note of in two thousand twenty three, this came back from Min Prairie.
We can always have the anecdote that we received six sixty two, five forty nine on this date from Min Prairie. We can include it into the general fund as its primary line item under a separate organization, though that's as good as the year it existed. So either way, it is surplus. It's just what number ultimately gets reflected in or consume the information. The numbers are the same regardless of what bucket they sit in. It's just when you get that on a report. So when bigger tally comes, follow the hand you that one page from back summary. They calculate that percentage on the front page of that, which was just under forty percent for twenty twenty two final. And of course, we just thought we'd go on whether that's the G L A recommendation or S A recommendation or something between such as Min Prairie, thirty five percent. Thirty five percent was the O S A recommendation a few years ago and just keep adjusting. Regardless, you know, whether it's two months or three months or four months operating. Don't have any anxiety about any of those. So Tammy and I have fleshed out a few times as far as just more up here, I'm going to be more down there. So the solution is probably somewhere in the middle.
Well, I think to Commissioner Kristofferson's end of it, the money was always a lot being from the public since the inception of Min Prairie. So it's levy dollars that, you know, there was peaks and valleys of that. And then when COVID hit, we had this excess money, which is still from the beginning of being levy dollars. So to have it earmarked or put in a separate silo, I mean, it's still a general fund to my end. And that's
I think I think part of our concern will be, I don't want to speak for anybody else, but certainly part of mine is, and particularly Commissioner Kristofferson since he chose Min Prairie, is that when the organization started, we know that the ramp up was tough and there was a lot of additional resources, quite a large cost increase there. That was very easily reflected in the levy. That I I have no, I have no anxiety that we, with the, with the great administration we have and our outer treasures office doing the job they do, that somehow will lose track of what it costs us at Min Prairie. We're not going to do that. I think the bottom line comes down to, do we feel like we need a separate cushion that we can just say, oh, this is what came back from Min Prairie to take against any ongoing increases that might come in the years ahead? The fact is, we're going to do that on eleven. It really is like pouring creamer in your coffee. Once, once you put it in there, it makes the whole thing light. It changes the level of the cup, you know? And so I don't have any anxiety either way, if that's some transparency that we want so that we have a self fund and we say, boy, when costs go up next year, that's where we're going to draw the line first and we're going to use that money first. But we're still going to do that in the context of your overall budget. So I think some of it is, quite frankly, the comfortability of the chair back committee. And I appreciate really Commissioner Kristofferson. I know that you that you like to have those numbers front the center because that, those are important things and we need to know what it costs us there. Absolutely. But as far as the accounting piece, I if it's, if it's coded properly, you can pull up, this is what Min Prairie has cost us every year. This is what we've put in every year to Min Prairie. Regardless, and that's going to continue to be the case. And I'm assuming that there would be a debit line in there too, that this is what we got from back from Min Prairie.
Yeah, so that would, that would be the idea that we do have one social services fund that is just a tool alone, so in Min Prairie, because it isn't departmental. We don't calculate out the salaries, it's whatever. It's just one line. So it's just, it's equally as easy to have a corresponding revenue line in that account to book ten dollars that come back in any given year.
When there would be then not from Min Prairie, there's a, when there would be the need for cash call, where does that money come?
General fund.
There it is.
So you can't say, but you got to be careful about how you use it. Because there very well could be cash call. Can if, if the reserves got down to that twenty percent or something, I'm sure they'd start asking for more money because they, they've got a fairly big for paying their help.
Yeah, cash flows.
Their cash flow is quite large.
And there's a couple of times during the year that depending on how that flows and out that they, that cash flow.
They re-close.
Yeah, they re-close.
Cash call come from the general fund.
So in theory, we will have alleviated the cash flow needs because we changed our distributions to order the three counties.
Yes.
And that was to solve that exact issue. So even with those three period months that happened last year, don't expect that to be relevant. It is a good point, but I think we, we will have already solved that just by the three counties doing a quarterly distributions.
Okay. So.
Yeah, and you know, we're already at a good level for our levy amount. So it doesn't, I'd rather, it makes probably more sense to hold those dollars so that maybe, you know, we can continue to keep that levy lower than it's at. So with that being said, do you want to return any of those dollars to lower the levy over a period of a few years or did you just want to try to continue to maintain the levy where it's at? You know, what is the other?
Right, I didn't know if you wanted to return those dollars over a period of number of years to lower the levy a little bit, you know, percent or something, or if you just want to leave the total amount in the general fund. On cash flow.
And in essence, we could, you know, like Michael showed us the sheet of the other counties where they're setting their levy. And there was half a dozen counties there that wrote in the memo, use five hundred thousand. You have a healthy general fund and we gave it forty five percent. You know, my thought coming into today is I didn't know where the twenty two audit ended up. And with the six hundred and sixty thousand that's going into that general fund, would it bring it over forty percent? Maybe do we need to have some kind of if we aren't going to go higher than forty percent? Get that back to that's just what was going through my head.
I'm going to make two suggestions first. Before we start our next meeting, we need to hold this the other way so we can see each other instead of pulling it this way.
This should be the last time we're
Yeah. Second, second, more to the point. I would be hesitant on the county level to, to put a policy in place above our reserve fund. It makes sense on the Min Prairie side, A, because it's a joint powers, B, because they don't have the capital and infrastructure needs that we have as a county with flexibility needed to do that. We, we need to be more actively making those philosophical decisions than Min Prairie does. And so I would have a tough time with that, with A, a policy about reserves. I think we need to, we need to keep looking at them, being aware of them, knowing where we're at and making decisions that are good considering all the infrastructure that we provide that Min Prairie does not. Because we've got way more robust capital improvement plans and whatnot than they're ever going to need to have.
Our, our general fund fluctuates more than theirs, doesn't it? I mean, when I was looking through the last seven years, it was high at sixty eight percent and it's low as in the thirties.
And again, it depends only on what you choose to use in that calculation or not. And often the auditors come down to what's encumbered, what's not encumbered, what's liquid, what's not liquid, what's assigned, what's unassigned. Those are all the terms you'll see going through that finalized audit report. Or it is, but the, the reality is yes, I mean, we could take any year if we pulled in all of our special revenue fund balances regardless of what they were for, even if they were assigned and said, here's all of the, in theory, the cash we could access, it would be that sixty ish plus percent every year. I wouldn't do that for good reason, but you could do that and you could present it that way and still be accurate in saying, well, they're reserve dollars, they're not being used. They aren't budgeted for a specific purpose, just like this surplus money would not be. So in any other instance, without good precedent, we would allow it to be rolled up in the retained earnings structure of the general fund at the end of the year. So it gets treated as a revenue in twenty twenty three like anything would that we would receive revenue for. And it just adjusts that overall actual expenditures versus revenue at the end of the year, the net difference is ultimately what affects that general fund balance from this year to this year. Which still seems like the easiest option and will forever be able to see that, that entry received in that social services fund in twenty twenty three and can code it specifically on that line to say, whatever, surplus.
You need to look at what, what do you absolutely want that money percent increasing to be? Are you going to stay at the one five? Okay, and that's your money. So that's where you need to all of this.
There's not very many times that we have the opportunity. We had zero, I think. And I think that opportunity does present itself this year. What, what is that number coming to zero? Well, it's like two hundred and seven thousand for one and a half.
Two sixty six, one sixty two is to give real dollar amount of one and a half percent increase. Total levy amount would be seventeen, seven, four, four, one hundred, which is the twenty twenty three. So that two sixty six, one sixty two would, without other direction, be coming out of fund eleven, which is why we're out of the capital infrastructure. So the current fund eleven budget outlook is five sixty two, three sixteen. So the two sixty six, one sixty two would be coming out of that.
So that's the budget expenditures or that's what's in there?
That's in my twenty twenty four program for twenty four, fund eleven for capital infrastructure. Five hundred and sixty six, or five hundred and sixty two thousand dollars.
That's what we have planned for that fund?
Yep, today. That's part of the one and a half percent increase.
Okay. We've already done a few things prior to, correct? I mean, is that the monies that are absolutely needed or is that what was projected and then we already have taken some off the list?
We have taken some off the list and we'll be paying for them more at the end of twenty twenty three because I anticipated there being a more friendly budget scenario. So why I was mentioning the project list itself is because of the twenty twenty four program that we went through with the building committee last week. We have right now booked a hundred and forty thousand dollars. So why the difference? And the difference is what I was mentioning to you in terms of the possible twenty percent commitment of that grant program. So if we're awarded a two million dollar construction grant, the local match component of that is four hundred thousand. That's the difference between those two. So the as I said, it's not necessarily make or break in terms of the grant application. It goes back to the same reserve conversation you have as far as we go. At two sixty six, that's and that would just end up being in the same episode flows of what the general fund reserve is, which is not.
You know, we've talked, I don't know how, we've talked about tax rate, our goals, where to get, you know, comparing to the rest of the state. And we've, this year, we're going to make huge strides getting down the world one feet. Are we other, I'm just wondering, other county, is it all coming down because of the increase in egg value? You know? Everybody's is coming down a certain amount.
Yeah, so it's been easier the last two years, first year with the residential, this upcoming year with egg, to, to be more rate friendly overall. But other counties that I've seen have not been as levy friendly in their, their decision making process. So you're still making a lot of strides in that way.
Right.
And it's, and as you'll see on the nineteenth, you've been progressively going down. Even before these two years, you were still decreasing the tax rate. The tax rate's been decreasing for the last four years. Two of those a one point nine, no, one point nine and two percent levy, one point nine five, two percent, and now looking at a one point five proposed. That's already a pretty significant downward trend. Evaluation obviously helps that rate calculation itself too. The levy number obviously does change, it's just how it's distributed, how it's spread. Did not later, that equation changes?
Speaking of that rate, I know that we've been putting some new technology in our outer treasures office and in our assessor's office that I think, I think, I want you to tell me are helping us to, are helping us hone in on those numbers a little more closely and consistently. Quite frankly, part of, part of in my mind, part of the reason we are where we are right now is because we didn't necessarily have the tools in place to, to track things as closely as we do now. Is that fair?
It's fair to say, especially in the assessor's office.
Okay.
So we invested in some field mobile technology, which is leaps and bounds better than which is essentially if I'm an appraiser out at a property, I have a little tablet and I'm updating all of these notes and values and things in real time to the tax account system, account side being the assessor's side of things. And that system integrates seamlessly with our Tyler tax and capital system. So significantly better, yes, than we ever have been.
Well, I ask that because I know on the, on the Min Prairie side, with what they, what they proposed budget for, for personnel, we heard multiple times in those meetings said that they could hone in better on what the actual increases they thought were going to be there because they too had adopted some new technology. One of my concerns is we, and we have, as the board expressed, that, that we don't want to do this, we don't want to ride this train, you know? Big levying, small levy, big levy, small levy. We want, we want home estates for our county, we want, we want predictability for us and for our residents for levy increases. You know, part of, part of what we've backgone this year is that big adjustment in egg values that of course, if we can offset with levy, we want to think about doing that. But it is my hope that, that we're not going to see, that this is, that this, we're not going to see this kind of adjustment that has to happen again anytime soon. Of course, we don't know what people are going to make from it and that drives that market.
Sold a piece of ground, our free one is sixty one thousand. So nobody can argue the values.
No, no, for sure not, absolutely not. And I'm not suggesting we can.
No, no, I mean, I mean, our constituents can't argue the increase.
Absolutely, because that's what it's. Absolutely. Well, then it does come down to, because we, I mean, we know what the rate of inflation was the last year. A one point five is way below that. And not that I want to, I don't want to take more money than we need to, to run things and be, and have foresight. I don't want to do that.
No, no, I definitely have those concerns too. I can sit here and pound on the table and say, look at taxes, look at taxes, but yeah, you don't want to. But we've done such a good job in the last few years consolidating some of those general or reserved dollars to where we know where we're at.
Yep, absolutely.
And I feel like I have much clearer picture of where we're at and I don't have any of those fears yet. We, you know, we went through legislative period where we increased, state monies coming down are increasing. Our needs are being filled. So, yeah, I don't want to cut ourselves short either.
What does a zero levy do to property tax?
Yeah, I can pull that one just a moment.
That's who it is.
Yeah, I know, I know, and I'm just looking for a general.
Yeah, I can give you that comparison in just a second, for sure. So going back to the, the egg piece though for a moment, reminding us that Steel County as well, on average, had more than a forty percent increase as well to any values. When we looked at that graphic in the preliminary levy budget presentation, we looked at the full southeastern quadrant of Minnesota, substantial increases all around to the north and south of us in terms of Rice and Freeborn, it was about twenty percent. They were already higher than we were in Steel was. So we're seeing a lot of catch up happening and it is not unique to, to Commissioner Kristofferson's point a moment ago, the Commissioner Forsoperson's point a moment ago, the the sale prices are not yet receding. So that's why we're kind of preaching caution over the last year that if this market on the residential side ever does fall out, the bottom falls out, people are likely still gonna see an increase the following year, which doesn't make sense in our brain. It's the same thing for egg. Eventually, the bottom's gonna fall out. Things are gonna be selling for nine thousand, ten thousand an acre. And that increase is still gonna happen the following year because of how the law is constructed. So the list of makes sense. And they're right, but that's how it's designed.
Well, and then, of course, if you followed the news, the state is talking about budget surplus for this next year, but but quite a drop-off the following year.
Two years.
Yes, and two years.
Two point four billion and for the next two years of surplus and two point three billion in deaths in two years.
And so
Five billion.
None of us have, none of us have the custom call, but, and, and obviously, I feel confident that, that we're not gonna do voodoo here, but we are, we do wanna keep in mind that there are fluctuations outside what we do that can affect us. We wanna, we wanna make sure that we have plan for those possible contingencies as wisely as we can. And we tend to be quite conservative here in La Cica County. And I'm concerned we're gonna go off the rails in the next two years and not really want to meet challenges that come.
One, one thing that comes to mind is like your little task for the moment. One of those sessions that we had, it was a broad session of everyone in there, you know? Do we have enough money in IT and for cybersecurity?
Was that scary or what?
We'll never have enough money in IT for cybersecurity. And all things cybersecurity then said significantly better place than we were five years ago. Twenty twenty was a scary picture in our IT department, especially in terms of the outdated network infrastructure, the firewalls. Everything, go down the list, walk in the room and point at something and it was needing to be updated. Fortunately, we are in a very good position now. We are in a very good position from a network security standpoint overall. Completely overhauled our our login capabilities, password protocols, our multi-factor authentication protocols, our VPN protocols. There isn't anything from a network standpoint that hasn't been touched or redone in the last four years. So very comfortable with where we are at now. The biggest risk any organization will ever have are the people in it. I did something I shouldn't have done. I clicked the link or I opened the attachment and here we are. But we have ways to isolate those instances as well too. We've implemented preventative measures from a, in, from an inbox standpoint itself puts those upon the individual users as well to identify and isolate those phishing attempts as they appear. Using, even if we're suspicious, it's better to isolate them. IT can review it and kick it out if it's, it's fine or kill it if it's malicious. So I'm, I'm as comfortable as I can be in a vast, ever-changing world that is impossible to prevent and impossible to fully defend against. But we're as defensible as we can be. The biggest, I think, solution for us was MCIT finding a partner for coverage insider security, which they did. That was really the biggest question mark is should that worst-case scenario happens, are we covered? And then we are now released. So that was, that was the biggest hurdle we're coming into the next year, I think. Surmounted. To Commissioner Krause's question quick, on a per-tillable basis, the difference between a zero percent and a one and a half percent is thirty-seven cents an acre? Tillable acre, thirty-seven cents. On a residential homestead, eleven dollars and fifty cents if a median value of a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. So if it's a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollar estimated market value home, a one and a half percent increase versus a zero percent increase is eleven dollars and fifty cents. That said, it's already looking at an experienced decrease of fifty-two dollars in twenty twenty-four because of the levy threshold itself and evaluation threshold itself. So it would go roughly from a, a fifty-two dollar decrease anticipated at one and a half up to a sixty-two dollars, sixty-two cents decrease.
Speaking of the conference, is there, besides the Justice Center, is there any, I'm looking at the levy. Is there any more, any other great rhinos that are coming at us? That we are aware of? You know, just for that conversation?
Well, I'm guessing all of them will tie back to the Justice Center at some point. Cybersecurity is a good example of that too. It's like, you know, every day there's going to be some sort of malicious attempt. Literally every day. Dozens of phishing attempt emails across the county. Have to isolate and try to make sure they don't go through. So we've been testing staff on their prowess over the last several months and sending reports. Here's how you did this month. And we, we create simulated phishing attacks and attempts and try to trick staff. Then report back and say, shouldn't have opened that.
So hate to interrupt, but I know we've been getting those too. And quite frankly, we're not getting, we're not getting any report cards. And I suspect that we may be the weakest link, I'm just saying.
Having a fundraiser yourself. I just click, I click off air. You guys got me so scared, I don't.
Exactly.
You look at it, it's like, I don't wanna open up anything.
For example, I've had, I, I had somebody walk up to me at the beginning of last, or the beginning of this year, end of last year, and just un, no, unsolicited, try to hand me a hundred dollar bill and said, here you go. This is for that Thanksgiving fundraiser. I just stopped and kinda looked. What are you talking about? So they will often use mining, you know, simulated attacks on there to try to disengage people and make them do something with all things. It worked out for me. No, I did not take the hundred. Who gets right there? So it's, we're doing everything we can from a cybersecurity standpoint, prey rhino standpoint, there's only some things you can do with the infrastructure. That's why, you know, we've been having the conversations you've been having. There, there are some things that there aren't any solutions in the existing space, which is why you're like just staring the problem in the face. Like, I know you're there, but I can't do anything about you. So as I was saying the, the other night, as we are often reminded by CISA or Homeland Security when they're on site, always not a plan. Right? Hoping for a while. Not, I don't mean to say that arbitrarily, because obviously, these are tremendously large decisions and high-dollar decisions and you're doing it the right way. But hoping, you know, over decades of time that we see this in the news, but it won't happen here. Hopefully, it won't happen here.
Somehow we hope the jail will just heal.
I think it's like having, when the kids are young, walk into your bedroom when you're sleeping and they're staring at you. You know they're staring at you, but you can't look.
Everyone's had that.
Tell me, okay, in here.
Yeah, and, and statistics will tell us and, and reality and logic and gut check will tell us that at some point in time, the hoping part will fail us and we'll have an instance that in theory, you could look back on and say, well, this could have been prevented if this. That's what we're trying to prevent with the whole judicial building conversation. And it came up in question on, on Tuesday night when I went to the city council meeting. And as I said then, it's, it's a fair question to say, if you set aside the jail piece of it, why even talk about building anything? It's like, well, the jail is substandard and it's a problem, obviously, but it's one of a laundry list of issues and problems, right, Rhinos, as you mentioned, that would be addressed. So I talked for a little while about probation, the state of probation. I talked for about district courts and the ability to safely transport, the, the ability to meet with clients and all of the substandardizations that we're experiencing outside of just the jail. It's easy to hyper-focus on jail cuz that's been just, it just is. It's, it's kind of yes or no. The yes or no. All of the other things are, are happening and are going to continue to happen regardless cuz there is an alternative for them. So.
But they're not safe.
No, it doesn't mean they're happening as efficiently or effectively as they can. And probation, court services is as good of examples as any of that is. As I said Tuesday night, it was, they're in a space that was literally the foundation of the courthouse that was excavated out to try to fit some people in. Nobody's gonna look at that and say, that makes sense.
Well, and if there is two phases to it, you're not going to build a jail and then build the Justice Center. It doesn't work then.
Brian and I had some conversation with Sheriff Smart.
How good.
About what his position is. And which was perfectly fine with us. So he can, he can go to staff and talk to staff with a clear mind. And so, yeah, he knows where the commissioner said as far as how we move forward. Just as part of it. Being having a, having a a class three going down to a class two or a class one, we have to have a plan in motion, set up to when those decisions come. Then, okay, we know it's a class two, we know it's a class one. This is what we initiate. And if he has any needs before as he's looking at those plans, then he would have to let us know. Otherwise, you have to have this plan, two plans in motion.
And I don't know if anybody here, and, and law enforcement South Committee, I, I appreciate if you could and maybe already have it, we can talk about why. It's just a technical question about how long DOC typically, usually make changes once they come into effect. I think that's a.
That was a question that was asked at City.
That's a pretty foundational question for you.
Yeah, so to answer that, I referenced the article from Rice in May of twenty, is it twenty-one? I don't know my PowerPoint I can look at. Speaking to that.
Okay.
And we know that in Rice's instance, they had a plan in place, they had a building in place, it just wasn't ready to move into. DOC still came back and said, yeah, sorry, you're outdone, you're going down to a ninety-day facility. So they were given a timeline. That timeline was not surpassed. So despite obviously having a plan on paper, obviously a building in place and obviously moving towards a goal of being in compliance, DOC still said, sorry.
And, and that was as of today, so you better have a plan after ninety days for those guys, guys and gals who have been.
So they've been on ninety days since July.
So that's why the super has ten other N Ds, right? Cuz I had a conversation with the super county too. So you would need to be way over built too.
You would need to be proactive on that anyway. If there is something coming in May, it's like, just figure on the doors won't be locked in May. It's, it's not. It's because it will still be a seventy-two hour or ninety day old. It needs to be implemented. And if for some reason something's overlooked, it could be business as usual for a while. Other than that, here's what's gonna happen that day. They came, they come in and say, here's what we're going to allow.
And as I, I told the city council directly Tuesday night, there's, there's two different plans that need to be in place. May plan and then the after of the May plan. Because we have a report in May, our inspection, our annual inspection of May of twenty-two has the recommendation in black and white that it needs to go to a ninety-day facility. We had that midterm stopped by Jen earlier this year too, same thing. In that instance, it was the best case scenario is going to a ninety-day facility. So I've been trying to repeat that over and over again that, remember, there are changes coming in May and this is the best case scenario. This is just it's the beginning of a, of a progressive conversation. It doesn't go to a ninety day and then they walk away and say, okay, we did our job, we're never coming back. No, the next time we talk, you'll be at a ninety, the next time, or a seventy-two hour, next time, you'll be closed. That's how those inspections are supposed to work. The ninety day is supposed to be. It's, yeah, it's supposed to be motivationary in, in a sense, but it's also reflective of you have a substandard, unsafe facility and you can't house people for longer than this. So there's nothing magic about that ninety days. It could be seventy-five, it could be a hundred and five, nothing happens after ninety days. It's just a reflection of the, the facility itself that does not mean a class three designation. So same concept with class one versus class two, all flies in maybe six hours or seven. Nothing magic about that.
Well, and of course, not much of this is predicated on we've gotten by this far because we've had great staff who have absolutely made the most of the, of the very substandard facilities we have. And that's been true. And, and no matter what we do about staffing, there is no way to fix the facilities. So that's, that's part of that conundrum too. It's like staff has done a fabulous job of making the most and, and they're serving our clients well, even though it's in a space that isn't okay. That's, that's how we've gotten by. That ninety days is, you got ninety days to fix this because something about your protocol is wrong too. Our protocol is right, it's just the building. As opposed to places where, oh, the building's fine, you're doing this and this and this wrong protocol-wise.
Yes, I'm sure Commissioner Forsoperson could tell you, I hammered on that one pretty hard as well.
I'm sure.
Staff are not the issue here. Staff are the only reason this hasn't been.
We were ninety-eight percent compliant in twenty-two.
Yeah, absolutely.
We were doing everything right. Just don't have the right facility.
Absolutely. Another great question.
But I, I, I'm sure you got plenty of good insight from your peers over the last few days. And it was, it was very helpful to be able to talk to Dr. Williams from the Sales Tax Task Force. That was created as a result of the legislature session and then more twenty-three, quarter time multiple options sales tax for jail correctional facilities. Get some perspective there where the anticipated that going. They have to have a recommendation to the legislature by, let's just say, true, by the end of January. So they're working towards that. Recommendation will be that it is allowed, but that doesn't necessarily guarantee it goes to one. The chairperson is still going to be the same that made that decision. This year was moving next year, so.
I was, I'm sorry. I was just gonna ask if those, if, if those more, if that moratorium has a, a length of time. Cuz I mean, you know, planning and zoning, it can only last a year and you gotta make some decisions. some decisions.
Yeah, they gave it two years.
Two years, that's what I thought.
Okay, and then their theory behind the moratorium was that they just, or what was it? To me, that's telling us that, because we know that the DOC or the state has tried to regionalize jails for some time.
Right. The official statement we would have heard on that decision is that we don't like sales tax as a funding mechanism because it's a regressive tax. And it's inequitably applied to individuals. That was kind of the official statement. Were there more conversations? Yes, but of course, we can add our own interpretation to that if we want to. Talked to several people that have done that and had offline conversations, but regardless, the, the implication certainly has been, as you were just saying, that we're trying to encourage more regionalization, we're trying to discourage investing state dollars in correctional facilities, in jails, in jail infrastructure. So where or if that narrative will change, I am not at all confident of next year especially, just simply because all of the same people are in the same positions. And right now, there's already a two-year mark on the place, so anything, we're really talking about is past 2025. So even if they completely reverse course, we're still looking at 2026 before a referendum could be requested and approved in November of 2026 before you have an answer to that question. Even if the world decided that's the path they wanted to go down. And that's what we talked about with Sheriff Chris Martin, a phased approach, and including that commentary, so we understand that. So that gives him, so he knows where he stands with this, with his staff. And he had been in contact with Rice and Dodge County.
Okay.
With their process, so he's well aware of how that, how that process works. So, yeah. So I also talked to Bruce Kimmel, length of the conference from Ellers, and Bruce Schwartzman, maybe yesterday, a good one. He was also at the conference by Evan's. And the sheriff's conference is always at the same time for whatever reason, so there was a possible back and forth. I invited them both to the evening meeting on Tuesday as well, just to give both sides of the same common perspective of, here's what you want to do, here's how you do it. In case it's helpful at all to have.
Subject matter.
The subject matter experts, but maybe the unbiased third party in the equation, so to speak. Not the people that have been looking at it constantly and arriving at a, at a conclusion, even in your mind if nothing else, you don't have any conclusion in place, obviously. Helpful to have their perspective was, here's what you can do, and here's in theory how you can accomplish what you want to do. The plan would be at 6:30. So ultimately, what I'm hearing though is you want to see some comparisons maybe from a 0% versus a 1.5%? Anywhere in between? I mean, you just want me to see some breakpoints between 0, 1/2, 1.5. Just want to make sure what's in front of you is what is helpful.
Would this be, are you talking on the 19th?
Ultimately, yeah. Yes, ultimately what you want to see, but even beforehand, if you need to see anything else in order to come to a place of comfort in your mind, certainly I can provide that.
Right. So, yeah. Yeah, I, I don't know what your guys', what are the rest of your guys' thoughts? I mean, I'm not going to, but I, I have a certain number, but.
Are you sure?
Well, I probably would already be staying at the 1.5%, I don't know. I think because we've taken a few things and wrapped them up in 23, that we're very good shape for 24, I would say would be absolutely.
I, I would not disagree, and I know Michael's plan for a lot of contingencies. I, this manufacturing resource center, I want to make sure that if we get a $2 million grant, that we've got our $42,000 to, to make that happen. And we, part of the reason that Wasekka County is thriving is because we have taken the opportunities that have come and aggressively pursued them. That's one of the reasons why Conagra is still here. It's, it's some of the reasons why things are moving in shape in the way they are. And I know that we have enough reserves to be nimble in that way if we need to do further tax payment. We want more businesses to come here, and we want them to build and grow here.
Right, and the lower we can get that tax rate.
Absolutely.
The less abating we'll have to do.
Absolutely.
To entice the business.
Absolutely.
Is my theory, my thought process.
Although, we will never be, we will never, we will never be to the point where that isn't going to be one of the tools of the country, I don't think. And Michael needs to correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I don't think we're big enough to ever get to the point where tax payment isn't one of the tools that we have to consider because we just don't, we're not going to be a Mankato or a Dark Mankato. I mean, the things of abatements. You got to, you got to keep that tool out there.
Yeah, so I mean, there's different funding mechanisms that regardless of the size of the county, that's one that's still often utilized, just because there's, from, from a sheer county standpoint, there, there's very little direct tools you have available to, that's why. Some of the other ones, over time, there used to be a lot more in terms of job opportunity building zones and things of that nature, but for the most part, you have the relationship between economic tax abatement and then business subsidy agreements. And business subsidy agreements is an economic tax abatement that has exceeded a certain dollar threshold, that's really all it is. So a different subset of law and statute that applies, but you, you also have things like a revolving loan fund. This ties into the much larger conversation not to get into today about EDA, where does the county go with EDA in the future? I think we have a good possible solution for that in place and conversations I've been having with the city. I'm waiting just for some feedback from the county attorney's office on. But will we ever get away from it? No, probably not, and I guess I would more so argue that we shouldn't. The, the ability to bring somebody in, tax rate is a huge piece of it undoubtedly, yes, but the willingness to have the conversation given is, is often as, as needed. Because these, these site selection firms know what the county's options are. It's a shortlist. So I would say to an extent, no matter how low that tax rate gets, that's still going to be a question they ask when they come through the door, just because why not? And it's, it's unique in that you have the ability to partner with the city and the school district by law, so in turn, it would be impactful thing. And it makes sense in a, in, in one way because then it becomes more of a unifying holistic approach for that community that, yeah, the city's buying in, yeah, the school district's buying in, they want us to go back. It's like the cities have tax and criminal financing, the county has almost no say on taxing criminal financing capital within the city other than potential road impacts or road costs. It's, it's strange in a way, but also just clues for this. But I mean, perspective wise, if you go back to 2019, and I, if I'm a, a business owner that, and my property, my commercial property is worth $500,000, the county taxes are $2,000 less today, or if you're with your proposed 2024 rates, then they would have been in 2019, if I, if I still have that $500,000 business. So are you making progress? Yeah, absolutely. That's, I mean, you've cut off a third of what those taxes would have been, quite literally, on a half a million dollar commercial property five years ago.
And that's part of the public education process. If you have someone with that commercial property, and they see that in the paper or in the newspaper, and they've been at it for 20 years, paying property tax, and now another business wants to come in and they're going to get that payment. They're going to say, oh, you're doing, what are you doing? And the thing of it is, is pretty much not a lot until that abatement falls off, and then it's going to keep your taxes in check, your property taxes in check. So I do have some of that, where they ask you that and say, well, you did this, you know, and that happened here, and it's like, but if you don't have something to entice those businesses in, you're going to be the one on them.
Well, and what I ran into is, even as we discussed the county for one, is it is a, it's a public education case for people, but well, they're not going to pay any taxes. No, 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 they're paying taxes. They're, they are absolutely paying taxes. They are just not paying all the taxes on all the improvement to the property, and that is to entice them to build here and become part of our community and part of our tax base.
There is never a tax revenue that is lost with tax abatement at the onset. The tax on the existing property is always in place, there's always a base. The abatement is on improvement value and gives them a break on what they want to build and what they do know. So it is never a decrease in taxable revenue as it compares to, you made the deal today, yesterday was exactly the same. So eventually you absorb that full amount of, of revenue into the equation, you still benefit from the value day one, but you absorb that full amount of revenue into the overall pool in the future. But it, it's illogical to say that the levy increased because of an abatement, an economic tax abatement. And in fact, it went down because the valuation, the denominator in that formula went up, the levy didn't change at all. Some education, that's what I said.
I think that's a lot, that's what a lot of people don't understand. It's about the improved back.
Yep, absolutely.
So I'm going to call the commissioners.
So Commissioner Christopherson, would you like to see a 0, a 1, and a 1.5 scenario?
Sure.
Sure.
I would, I would make the request for a 0.501 and 1.5, those four breakpoints. They're nice even breakpoints.
0.51 and 1.5, but what are, what are in less?
Then we will skip it by the 1.13 or something.
Now the staff can't make that happen for us because they have.
I'm okay with that.
I am too.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's simple in scope enough right now to say that anything you choose is coming out of Fund 11, that's why I wanted to present it that way, and that's okay, because if, if that grant is awarded, which of course we could be is, then we, we will find some ability to find the local match there. I still have a high degree of confidence in interest earnings for 2024. I think we will be under budget in terms of the revenue projection for 2024. Just look, we don't know that, we're seeing some stabilization there, so it's, it's still appropriate where we're at from a budgeting standpoint, but I wouldn't be surprised if that endures through 2024, based upon what we're hearing from projections.
I'm thinking one more thing here that we, one more ball that we're juggling that we don't want to side up here is broadband. I know yesterday, the grant was, was put in for border-to-border, it's going to do third of the county, exciting stuff, but that means there's two thirds that still needs to systematically be served. This is 675,000 that, that we've committed, and of course, those are our funds that we set aside particularly for this, and I know we didn't use all that we set aside for broadband. But I, I do want us to keep that in mind because, I mean, we heard at AMC, was it Kemp County? I'm there, by the end of 25, they're going to be built out, and they've done it in three years. There's, there's all that money and federal money coming for broadband, now is the time we leverage that with our own dollars, and we need to have those dollars available because otherwise we're going to miss the boat. And this is a chance to, to literally future-proof Wasekka County when it comes to hybrid infrastructure.
Unfortunately, we're hearing from BevCom that they are, if this goes through, they're committed to making Wasekka County their next project area. They'll be invested as well, and they want to continue to increase that footprint in hurry.
Will they be able to do that, you know, because they're coming from the south, and that's where they're, that's what they built out, they're coming through. You know, we've got people up in this area, providers.
They've also got build out from, they're in like Morristown and that area. They are up in that corner of the county as well. And this newly proposed build out, grant application does put a heart in our county that they can work out how to, and go through. So it's not strictly a really skinny extension cord from the southwest corner up to the front.
I just thought, isn't there other providers that have kind of earmarked this area for them to build out? I mean, are they going to run into more competition with other providers?
None. And now that LTD is off the table, because that's what really kept us from doing it earlier, was our reverse auction and LTD winning that reverse auction, and they've, they have been disavowed now, so we don't have to worry about them contesting any build out that we have.
So part of the border-to-order application process is what's called the challenge period, which is, you literally as BevCom have to contact every other ISP that provides any kind of internet in Wasekka County and say, we're planning on doing this, is this in some way infringe on your existing plans or? There's still technically a few days left of action. The official close date is today, they submitted yesterday, but the official application deadline is today, I think it runs for almost a decade. Challenges today, so we're not anticipating the receiving of changes.
But that could be, I mean, we could have another couple of million dollars in that by the time we're done, depending on costs and, and whatnot. And, and that is significant, it's significant enough that we don't want to have to decide to cover that any year, we want to, we want to make sure that we're strongly positioned to.
Definitely, yeah. The, the biggest cost is getting in here, establishing that initial. Yep, the biggest cost is getting in here, establishing initial co-location and plus an infrastructure, and then there are definitely some natural offsets that'll happen after that, whether we're involved or not originally. And they'll very quickly start going to Jesus. Everything you see in the project plan is not everything that they will serve. That's what we had to put in the project plan. So if there's a neighbor a half a mile down the road, they're absolutely going to go to that neighbor if they want the service. It's just, we may not have qualified for that neighbor in the project area. So we have to leave. Say we're going to pay for them as part of this grant allocation they would have to serve. Okay, so I was hearing a zero, half a percent, one percent, one and a half percent, just variability, how that impacts properties. As far as dollars.
As far as the, should I say this? Agreement amongst the commissioners on setting that. I'd like to see the conversation. And I know we're supposed to make a motion, second it, and then discuss. But I was a little frustrated with last year. I'd like it to be unanimous, well, shows unity in the board. But I think some of the discussions had to be done before that motion was made.
So to the point there, it's a public hearing. Different rules. Public hearing, you can have the presentation, you can have questions, you can have discussion. That's different than your normal board meeting action item. If there's something on the agenda, the Robert's rule is put into it that you've already committed to making an action on it. That is where it's appropriate to have a first and a second, then a whole discussion. Because the, by nature of it existing on the action items, you've already committed to making a board decision. That's why you approve the agenda at the beginning. So the time to discuss something would have been at the beginning to say, I don't want to see this, let's talk about it first. Do we really want this on action items? So in this scope, public hearing, you can absolutely have that discussion at a time. Pose questions to the county administrator at your own part. And then make a decision.
All right, good to know. Thank you. Yes. Anything else?
I will get out some revised impacts to you by the end of the week then.
Thank you. Any other work session?
Yes, sir.
Good.
Good.
The United States of America. And to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. There is an agenda at the back corner. Would you enter the door? Please sign in. And we will move on to public comment. Is anyone here for public comment? Public comment? Public comment? There's no one for public comment. We'll move on to number two, which is the sheriff's office introduction of new staff. Good morning, Sheriff.
Morning, everyone. Good morning, public. I just want to take a minute to recognize some of our staff this morning. And to start with, we'll bring up Sarah Weed. Right here is Sarah Weed is our new full-time dispatcher. She started on Thursday, just this past Thursday. She comes to us from Pearl Street, Pro, Riceville County Dispatch on Pearl Street in Omatana. So approximately a year and a half of previous dispatch experience. She and her fiance are living here in Wasika. So we're excited to have her on board as a full-time dispatcher, and expect great things from her. So thank you, Sarah. Thank you. There you go. And then a couple other recognitions we want. Schedules have been a challenge, but we recently promoted two deputies to patrol sergeants here earlier in the year, and we want to officially recognize them for their hard work that they've done for the sheriff's office.
The United States of America. And to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. There is an agenda at the back corner. Would you enter the door? Please sign in. And we will move on to public comment. Is anyone here for public comment? Public comment? Public comment? There's no one for public comment. We'll move on to number two, which is the sheriff's office introduction of new staff. Good morning, Sheriff.
Morning, everyone. Good morning, public. I just want to take a minute to recognize some of our staff this morning. And to start with, we'll bring up Sarah Weed. Right here is Sarah Weed is our new full-time dispatcher. She started on Thursday, just this past Thursday. She comes to us from Pearl Street, Pro, Riceville County Dispatch on Pearl Street in Omatana. So approximately a year and a half of previous dispatch experience. She and her fiance are living here in Wasika. So we're excited to have her on board as a full-time dispatcher, and expect great things from her. So thank you, Sarah. Thank you. There you go. And then a couple other recognitions we want. Schedules have been a challenge, but we recently promoted two deputies to patrol sergeants here earlier in the year, and we want to officially recognize them for their hard work that they've done for the sheriff's office.
The United States of America. And to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everyone. There is an agenda at the back corner. Would you enter the door? Please sign in. And we will move on to public comment. Is anyone here for public comment? Public comment? Public comment? There's no one for public comment. We'll move on to number two, which is the sheriff's office introduction of new staff. Good morning, Sheriff.
Morning, everyone. Good morning, public. I just want to take a minute to recognize some of our staff this morning. And to start with, we'll bring up Sarah Weed. Right here is Sarah Weed is our new full-time dispatcher. She started on Thursday, just this past Thursday. She comes to us from Pearl Street, Pro, Riceville County Dispatch on Pearl Street in Omatana. So approximately a year and a half of previous dispatch experience. She and her fiance are living here in Wasika. So we're excited to have her on board as a full-time dispatcher, and expect great things from her. So thank you, Sarah. Thank you. There you go. And then a couple other recognitions we want. Schedules have been a challenge, but we recently promoted two deputies to patrol sergeants here earlier in the year, and we want to officially recognize them for their hard work that they've done for the sheriff's office.
The office for a shorter period of time, if I shall see fit, to revoke this appointment. Josh, if you want to raise your right hand. I Joshua Langer.
I Joshua Langer.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the. The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
And that I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of sergeant.
That I will faithfully and impartially perform the duties of sergeant.
And for the county of Wasika.
And for the county of Wasika.
The state of Minnesota.
The state of Minnesota.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Christopher, you may. And your brother. Joe name? Let me speak shield. With that being said, I'm going to promote Josh. A certificate of promotion to sergeant. Our second sergeant promoted was Joseph Flufflet. On step up, Joe. Begin the same process. Joe was a, Joe started with the county in 2016. Was a patrol deputy and went through the hiring process, emotional process, and was selected as one of these sergeants. and was selected as one of these sergeants.
I J S Dulles, duly elected and qualified sheriff of Wasika County in the state of Minnesota. Designate and appoint you Joseph Flufflet, county of Wasika, state of Minnesota, as sergeant. For said county of Wasika during my term of office or for a shorter period of time if I shall see fit to revoke this appointment. And said appointment has taken effect.
Joe, if you want to raise your right hand.
I Joseph Flufflet.
Do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the state of Minnesota. And that I will faithfully and partially perform the duties of sergeant. For the county of Wasika. The state of Minnesota. To the best of my knowledge and ability. So help me God.
So today here with Joseph is his two daughters, Ashley and Avery. And they're going to pen their dad with their new sergeant badge. It's customary for promotional appointments for the deputy to receive a new badge and to be penned by his family member and/or loved ones. So with that being said, I will also promote, issue a certificate of promotion to Sergeant Joseph Flufflet for his assignment to patrol sergeant. With that being said, I want to thank the county administrator, the commissioners, and the public, and all of our fellow staff for supporting the Sheriff's Office and all that we do. Thank you. All right. Thanks, Sheriff. And move on to approval of the agenda. Is there anything to add? Commissioner Crowsey?
No, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Christopherson?
No, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Multer?
No, Mr. Chair.
Michael?
No, sir.
Well?
No.
With that being said, I would look for a motion to approve the agenda. The amended. Is there a second?
There is.
Motion by Commissioner Christopherson, second by Commissioner Multer. Any other discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Moving on to number four is to ditch authority, which is of Wasika Blor's Joint Ditch 51 continuation of the R O Z final hearing. Chris?
Morning.
That was my guess.
Yes. We're here this morning. We're here today for the continuation of the final hearing for the information of benefits and damages to the county. Wasika Blor's County G D 51 was listed under section 62023. During the public conference carried out under section 6, three landowners, three years, two years, and four months. Subtle discrepancies. Board delivery reports and the testimony have received from the viewers of the landowners following deliberation, which Commissioner Multer moved to continue the public hearing until 9:30 a.m. December 7, 2023, today. My commissioner's room will be sandex located at 300 North State Street in Wasika. And also to direct the viewers to investigate the benefit of acres from Longnecker, Byrock, Schwartz, and Bloom properties and file amended viewers' report if necessary. The viewers at that time investigated the benefit of acres in question and filed amended viewers' report with the Drainage Authority on November 21, 2023. At this time, we're asking the Drainage Authority to adopt the findings in order, including the amended viewers' report, which will be Exhibit A, the benefits and damages statement, which is Exhibit B, approving the redetermination of benefits according to grasp offers additional regularly and confirming the damages and directing payment. With that being said, I guess I would open it up to any questions that you may have. I would assume those questions that were in question were satisfactory. They were. The viewer, Mark Behrens, met candidly with all the affected landowners and...
...meeting when every, all the stuff has been vetted and then they want to give input, which of course they can. But I don't think they understand that they're spending their own ditch money. It raises the cost for the people who benefit from the ditch to have to, to have to do these extra processes. And, and we're trying to be efficient. So, as I said, staff, whatever we can do to help educate our public so that they know how to get to that first line of the room, maybe bring their time out, bring any concerns they have, then we can have a good final report the first time around more efficiently and more cost effectively. Thank you, staff. I know that you're, you're working hard to do that. And this isn't a diss on staff. This is an educational piece we've got to do with our public. Because we've got a lot of ditches to redetermine yet.
Yes, we have a few. We do have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? With that being said, that would look forward, but it will be... It'll be, it'll be roll call. Thank you.
Commissioner Christopherson?
Yes.
Commissioner Crowsey?
Yes.
Commissioner Multer?
Yes.
Motion carries three zero.
Thank you. Thanks. Go on to the second. Is that it? All right. Thank you. That's it? All right. You need I T. That motion does carry. And then hopefully when we say a I D. All right. Moving on to number five is the approval of the county board minutes. Second county board of commissioner work session, November 7, 2023. This is county board commissioner meeting minutes November 7 of 2023. I would look for a motion to approve if you've had time to work through. Is there a second? Second. There's a motion by Commissioner Multer, a second by Commissioner Christopherson. Is there any discussion? There is not. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Six is the consent agenda, which is the approval of bills, transfer between funds, transfer between funds, signed vehicle fund, fund 13 transfer to equipment, fund 13 transfer to the local option sales tax, payment schedule for the second half 2023 taxes, to the residential tax abatement, transfer of developmental rights of sale and Cory Youngberg trustees, conditional use permit, site plan amendment Nicholas and Ashley Rager, conditional use permit extension for next era solar projects. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion. Christopherson, any discussion? Getting none. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Next, number seven, action items. Letter A is Min Prairie Joint Powers Agreement, November... Good morning, Tara.
Good morning. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Tara Rich. I'm the interim executive director at the State of Minnesota Department. And I am excited to be here because we are in the midst of wrapping up some significant work that's been done, very thoughtful work to look at our current county cost share formula and revamp that in a way that all three of our counties felt that it was fair and equitable and would do us well for the next several years. A process that we need to follow in order to implement our current joint powers agreement with the three counties. So the first of those was that our cost share formula needed to pass through our finance committee. And so we got through that step. We had some discussions. And again, lots of thoughtful work went into development of an updated cost share formula. The second step was for the Min Prairie Joint Powers Board to pass the motion to adopt the amendments to the joint powers agreement. And then that happened on November 21st. There are three components to the amendments. The first is specific to the formula, which would be to revise the current formula so that it would have the following factors in weight. So we'd be looking at 40% population, 40% net tax capacity, 10% poverty, and 10% inflation. Those numbers would be determined utilizing a three-year rolling average, where a three-year rolling average is a bit. The second part of that is that this updated cost share formula would be implemented in its entirety effective January 1, 2025. And the number three is to put language into our amendments that would prohibit the review of the cost share formula in years other than the year immediately following the release of the decennial census. When this type of conversation comes up, it creates a lot of uncertainty for the staff that work in our organization and a lot of stress. And so we want to avoid having this conversation every year, every other year. So we're hoping that maybe we can just limit it for 10 years, knowing that this first review would come a little sooner because we're already partway through that 10-year cycle. So our joint powers agreement does indicate that in addition to a supermajority vote by our joint powers board, that two-thirds of our county boards must also approve the amendments. And so today I am here to ask for a motion from the Wasika County Board to approve the amendment to the joint powers agreement. There was a complete copy of the amendment in your packet. I outlined the three adjustments that are identified in that. And then you also have an outline of what that cost share formula would look like in your county. So I'd be happy to take questions if there are any, otherwise.
Thanks, Tara. I'm still getting to the... All right. So you need one, what's your first action item? She just needs a... I'm sorry. You answer it.
Sure. So that's really, there's three components that are all wrapped into one action item. So the action item is to approve the amendment to the joint powers agreement.
Okay. And I would agree with that. Okay.
Okay. One second.
All right. So we do have a motion and a second. I hold up a... Nice. Motion by Commissioner Christopherson, second by Commissioner Multer. Is there discussion?
Yeah, I guess I'll just give you the perspective of the board members. This has been a long-going conversation as we went through other conversations over the past few years about Min Prairie and its viability for all three counties. And Dodge County brought this to the forefront that they didn't feel like that was the right formula going forward. And it's, it's difficult at any time to take an organization that you're dividing and you've established it with a certain formula and then partway through, you know, change it. It's a sticky situation. But I would applaud the Dodge County Commissioner and Chozas and Ray here from Steel County because those two counties were being affected much more than Wasika. No matter which way we move this formula around, we had minimal effect. And I think they both worked together to find a solution that makes sense going, more sense going forward with what we're using without a huge impact initially. So it's not impacting the ratio very much, but I think down the road it'll, it makes more sense.
I would agree with Commissioner Christopherson. Lot of thoughtful work went into this. And, and we did appreciate the patience of staff as the board worked through this. We do... And there were some resources that went into this. We did some consultation with D E A and, and looked at other formulas and what we were using. Not that they were bad measures or unfair, but there were just better measures that we could look at to base this new formula on. And it certainly will cause some changes, but those changes are relatively gradual. And... And it certainly will cause some changes, but those changes are relatively gradual and and the proposed formula here is much more reflective of the reality of service, which which is important. So. And we had strong consensus at the joint powers board, which I appreciated very much. We're bringing this to you from a from a space of agreement, not from a space of disagreement at all.
And that's what I thought the joint powers board has already, well, well, I've just already presented to the other county. No. I think it was the first county.
Yes, Steel and Dodge were the first to say.
Absolutely. Commissioner Kristofferson, with the Dodge Steel and Wasika, those proposals, member shares, did those shares change from last year's or for the previous years? Now those shares. But the formula changed.
The formula is not going to change till January twenty twenty five. So we'll continue twenty twenty four with the old formula. And that formula changes annually to a small degree because it uses, you know, very slight changes, but it does change every year.
But the member share does not change.
Are you looking at this? Is that?
Yes, that's what I was looking at.
So Kevin is our finance manager and he put this together to show you how we've been using the the proposed formula in twenty two and twenty three. This is what how it would have looked so that you would have that ability to compare it to
Oh, okay.
How it how it actually was in twenty two and twenty three, so that you can just kind of have a, it's more for comparison. So the new proposed rate formula, cost share formula would not actually be implemented until twenty twenty five. Because at this point, all of our counties have already established their budgets for twenty four, and so it wasn't feasible to implement that for twenty five.
So you look at if it would have been implemented in twenty four. You can see the changes that would have been made in that in the top scenario there.
Okay.
Which is, you know, less than a percent for Wasika. Right around a percent for Steel and a percent and a half for that.
Then Chair? Number one, yes.
And one other comment I'll make. Staff has really gone above and beyond the last couple of years to to try to suss out of the state's systems some county-specific data for us, which has helped reassure us of of the service continuing across the three counties. It helped it helped us understand what the differences in our system are across the three counties and what the unity and uniform services are across the three counties. And it was with that context that this formula came through too. A reassurance that that we've got, we're we're getting service for what we're putting in and we're getting good service for what we're putting in. Not that we ever doubted it, but we could see some of the statistical numbers from the state that helped us see how many cases of this, that, and the other that we've had, at least in general sense. And so that was helpful for us.
Return on our investment is. Now, as far as the money that's going into. So, yeah, maybe.
Maybe.
All right. Is there any other discussion? We do have a motion in a second. All in favor, aye? Those opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Thank you. Thank you. Next up, resolution twenty twenty three dash fifty one, accepting cert donation.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Wasika County Service gave the amount of this donation of two hundred dollars. So I am requesting the board to pass a resolution that will accept this donation, which we will use for training and equipment for our certees.
All right. Do we have a motion for this?
I would make that motion.
Is there a second?
There is a second.
The motion by Commissioner Multer, second by Commissioner Crowsey. Is there discussion?
Only thanks to our trainers and our staff that helped make cert happen in Wasika County. Our county is better and safer because we have engaged cert holders. Thank you.
If there's no other discussion, all those in favor, aye? Those opposed, same sign. That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
C is adopt the Wasika County twenty twenty four aquatic invasive species prevention plan. For good morning, how are you, shires? Still get used to coming up and presenting in front of you, so excuse my nervousness if I stumble a little bit. So once again, bringing the aquatic invasive species prevention plan before you. This is required under Minnesota statute four seventy seven A point one nine. The approval of the the plan and the adoption, the adoption of the resolution. And so for twenty twenty four, the county is, will receive forty six thousand, six forty four. The current balance is approximately a hundred and ninety thousand. Those numbers will change a little bit as we close out staff time at the end of the year, but that is the approximate number. Plan is used, you know, to kind of lay the groundwork for how we spend that funding during the calendar year. You know, for this year, it'll be, we're looking to continue the local grant, local grant program. Some education and outreach and operations. We have a contract with D N R for operation of the electronic fish barrier. So that's the asking for you to adopt, to approve the resolution to adopt the aquatic invasive species prevention plan. I can go through. I made minor changes to the plan and then I I did include, you know, kind of a brief presentation with the stats, if you'd like to go through that before before we put it to a vote. So on page, the main changes. I made some minor organization or just to help it flow better and know the page, you know, references to parts of the plan. Took out, one of my goals going forward in twenty four and and moving past then or past the next calendar year will be to expand this to a longer term, you know, say a five or a ten year plan with, you know, essentially amendments if needed. I'd like to move forward with with kind of expanding the the vision of what we're using the A I S funding for to to try to make us more resilient and flexible as new challenges approach. I did not include it in here. One of the ideas that, you know, I'm looking at pursuing is adding essentially an emergency fund budget so that if we get a phone call from a lake service provider and and they say, hey, we found zebra mussels on a dock coming out of Clear Lake, that we can work with the D N R and have a pool of funding setting there that we can get out and do early treatment, do early investigation or the further investigation. So that's one of my goals moving forward in twenty four is to just kind of expand the vision of what we're doing. With that, aside from those those minor the minor just kind of editing that I made on page seven at the bottom of no, I'm holding it by my hand. Page thirteen, bottom of section two point six, increasing available resources and leverage partnerships. The bottom three listed there under the action items. So pursue further staff training and certification to increase organizational capacity. Investigate, pursue additional equipment purchases to increase county capacity and partner with neighboring counties to develop and implement A I S biological control programs. Are the three main items that I added to the plan for for twenty twenty four. Those three, you know, start laying the groundwork for some of those, some of the things that I mentioned with with early detection and just kind of increasing our capacity in the event that something happens. Moving to the presentation, I'll just touch quick on our highlights. So we have contracted with Water Guards. They're a private company that hires and manages overseas our watercraft inspectors. Their end of the year report was eight hundred and eighty-nine total hours spent at the four accesses and we had fifteen hundred and fifteen total inspections completed on the four accesses here in Wasika County. Through the local aid grant, we assisted, we provided funding to Reed's Lake for water mill foil treatment as well as Clear Lake for the water mill foil chemical treatment. That was also supplemented with the aquatic plank people that we've been doing with the equipment that the county has. That next page, like I said, the simple formatting changes and then added those activity items for the main changes to the plan. And then the following page is the expenses for twenty twenty three and the twenty twenty four budget request. As I said, the, I have not closed out or, you know, we haven't gone through and finalized the staff numbers so that five thousand dollars under administration is an estimated value for the twenty twenty three expenses. With that, twenty twenty, total twenty twenty three expenses were forty five thousand, six ninety-eight, forty-five. You know, it was kind of a, with with me coming in halfway through the year, really the only big education that that we did for the year was at the county fair. It was very well received. I was there a lot and I would be assessing how I staff that booth and probably going back to partnering with the S W C, sharing that space with them so we could use everyone's time a little more efficiently. And then we did, there was some promotional material that was purchased there. For the twenty twenty four budget, you'll see that I increased, I bumped up the number for the watercraft inspectors with legislative changes that were made. The company that hires those inspectors now has to allow those employees to accrue and use paid time off. Have not found out for sure what they're going to use for a for a value for those numbers. So I was a little, I think I was probably a little generous with with what I put in there, you know, as an estimation, but I wanted to make sure I was airing on the high side. So for the watercraft inspectors, the twenty five thousand, six hundred. Local aid grant did go up significantly. We have, you know, in the past, had a lot of money going to Clear Lake. We did have a ask earlier this fall from Reed's Lake to consider adding more money. You know, having the option for more funding to cover some of their expenses as well as conversations have started with Lake Illusion. Whether that's through cart management or, you know, other programs, we wanted to kind of, we have a fund balance there. We wanted to bump up and and kind of expand those opportunities. We have a continued obligation for the the payment on that electric fish barrier. And then going back to those categories that I added in the plan, I did bump up education and outreach and administration, I guess administration, I left at the estimated value from this year. But just expanding those categories to allow some flexibility as training opportunities, you know, come up and and staff can can go and pursue those. So for a total ask this year of seventy three thousand, four hundred, we have not trying to remember if this hundred ninety thousand, one ninety that I have in there, if that included the second half allocation, I believe it did. So that one ninety, hundred ninety thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars includes the full twenty twenty three payment. That's essentially what we will have sitting there at the end of the year. So like I said, we have a fund balance there that, you know, I feel comfortable coming to you asking for, you know, kind of bumping up to to offer some additional opportunities locally. So that said, if there's any questions, I can kind of do you want to get a motion in a second or do you want to have some questions? No. This is for twenty twenty three dash five zero, I believe. Yes. There's a, there is a motion. Is there a second? Second. Motion by Commissioner Multer, second by Commissioner Kristofferson. Any discussion?
I guess I'll just say it. I appreciate we've got a fund balance there and that we're looking at at bumping up the aid grant because partly because I was at a meeting with Lake Illusion Lakes Association and I know that they have interest in in being more active and also working in partnership with the county to improve the water quality and the and the life on Lake Illusion. And they've got a, they've got a group that wants to to partner with us and so I appreciate that and I have some resources to be able to do that. Like we do with other local associations in the county.
The only, is there a possibility of, well, of course, we don't know. The only thing that worries me about, and and I get that you can't, you don't need to hold a hundred and ninety thousand in in reserves, you know. So you're budgeting over what's coming in. These people, these lakes that are and I think we should help them. That's what the money is designated for. But if that continues, we don't want them thinking that that's going to be there every year if if we can't increase our revenue from the state.
Right. So that is a, it is a discussion that we've had, you know, in in the department. You know, it has kind of been we've had, we've had the local aid grant. They've come to us. It's been a pretty easy ask. So one of my, one of my tasks for this winter is to reach out to some of these other counties that are offering local aid grants and see what they are doing to I mean, it's such a small pool. I don't necessarily want to say competitive, but what are some of the other ways that the counties are are asking their lakes associations to put more skin in? You know, it's, I I know in places, you know, it's going as far as the local aid grants not coming through unless the lakes association works with the city to actually collect money from all the property owners, not just those that pay in on the lakes, the association dues. You know, so is it, is it something that if we're going to continue working with Clear Lake that, you know, hey, the city needs to get more skin in the game. The entire population around the lake needs to get more skin in the game, you know, something like that. Also, you know, for increasing the funding coming from the state. We are, you know, so that, the formula that's used is based off of the number of watercraft launches and then parking spaces. We have, we've started talking with D N R Parks and Trails about We have, we've started talking with DNR Parks and Trails about, I mean, it it started with, you know, fixing or improving the launch at Reed's Lake, and then we've, we've also looked at adding a couple of concrete launches at Blomberg Park to Moon and Marsh and Watkins there. If those come through, it would, it's, it's gonna at least add one more access for us. You know, there may be a, need to be a discussion, you know, if they need to add parking spaces. I'm, I'm going to be, I I put in a request last week to receive the criteria that the DNR uses for, how do we measure those parking spaces and and come up with that, with the goal of updating our numbers by, you know, by first, first of June, so that they can use it for their calculations for twenty twenty five. Otherwise, to to what Commissioner Malter said regarding Lake Elation, with Elation, it presents a unique opportunity because Iasko Creek and Lake Elation were part of our priority watershed planning areas for the One Watershed One Plan. There will, we haven't finalized anything, but there is, there is more than likely going to be money coming to Lake Elation through One Watershed One Plan for a lake assessment and some of the planning that's needed there, which would help to kind of supplement, you know, what we may do on the AIS side of things with, say, cart management. You know, so that's, there's, it's, it's a lot of moving pieces that we're trying to piece, you know, put together. But it's, it's starting to become more clear, so.
Eric, how, of the twenty twenty four allocation of forty six thousand, six hundred and forty four dollars, how do you arrive at that number? From the expenses in twenty twenty three to the budget in twenty twenty?
For the forty six, six forty fours is what is come, that is from the Department of Revenue.
That is the actual number that we're receiving.
Yep. So that first half, so twenty twenty, or twenty three, three twenty two, or whatever it is, will come, I believe it's roughly August one of twenty twenty four, and then the second half comes.
So that is the complete number.
That is six, six forty. Yep. That is directly from the Department of Revenue.
And do you know what that number was last year?
It was just slightly more, I want to say like two hundred dollars more. You know, every year, it's, it's a, it's a very fluid process because you have Cass County, I task it counting, you know, these counties up north that have, that are, that are getting, you know, like I task it counting, I want to say gets two hundred thousand dollars, Cass County gets a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Well, if, if all of a sudden the federal, like I said, the Department of Interior decides to close a boat launch in the National Forest, then that boat launch comes off of their rules and that money goes to somebody else. And it's just kind of a, it's a fluid process and that's, that's part of what kind of spurred me looking into adding some accesses here is, hey, let's do something that at least for the time being is going to bump up what we're receiving. And it's, and it'll be a, a small amount, but it's something. And it's a way to get more money coming in that we can utilize locally.
So do you ask for more every year than what you receive, or are they just adding?
It's a flat formula, that's what it is.
Yep, so Mr. Chair, since I think two thousand and fifteen, it's been like a ten million dollar allocation statewide. And then they calculate based upon a fifty percent allocation based upon the boat launches themselves and another fifty percent allocation of the boat trailer parking spaces or something like that. The, the funding source has not really changed at all, which is why it's very marginal year over year for the actual aid allocation amounts that we receive within a hundred to two hundred dollars, basically.
But I was just getting to the point of are they sending more money for something that's happened than the prevention of? You know, is it the after, the after fact?
It, it, they send us money based on the formula, which has nothing to do with what's actually, other than, other than the number of inspections. And we control that, that's to some degree, because the more inspections we can make, obviously, the better we are in that formula. But it, it's, it's not like, oh, you found this many weeds, you get this much money, that's not the way this formula works.
The, the other thing, there is additional funding that can be pursued. I'm not overly, it's a, it's a competitive grant, grant process for that. And that's, I, I just am not overly familiar with how all that works yet. But it is something that we can investigate more going forward, if it's, if it's something that could apply here locally that we can, we can put in.
Yeah, because we know in this area, our lakes are more in distress than, say, north.
So I did pursue some of the supplemental funding a couple of years ago when we were first talking about weed harvesting. The total allocation is only like five hundred thousand dollars for the state, so it was not a very deep pool. So when the certification started for the local prevention, it was one and a half million dollars. It's allocated from the general fund by June first of the year. We get that certification well ahead of time. So by June first in twenty twenty three, we knew that we were going to get the forty six thousand dollars for twenty twenty four. So we know well in advance where it's coming from. And it's, we can essentially bank on that, that same amount every single year unless the law changes. So that ten million dollar amount right now is statute in chapter four seventy seven. It comes right out of the statute, says here's what the allocation is from the general fund every year. So unless that changes, that specific law changes, the formula itself is never going to change. Because that formula, the fifty fifty, and the allocation amount itself is right out of the statute.
Any other questions? We do have a motion with second on the floor, all vote in favor, aye. And also both at the same time that motion carries. Thank you. D is the twenty twenty three aquatic invasive weed harvester program review.
Well, before the year end of twenty twenty three, Eric, we wanted to give you a, a brief update on the aquatic weed harvest activity that was performed this year. Maybe compare and contrast just a little bit to twenty twenty two, which was the first year of the, of the campaign. Twenty twenty two, we were permitted to mechanicly harvest ninety eight acres. We harvested about seventy five of those ninety eight acres. We harvested two hundred dump truck loads, which totaled about two hundred and thirty tons of pond. In twenty twenty three, we, we upped that permanent area to a hundred and sixty seven acres. And we had hoped that we would be able to get an earlier start and accomplish a little bit more. This year, we ended up harvesting a hundred and fifty acres. If you look on your little map in front of you, the pink outline is the area, the permitted harvest area. And all of the track marks, squibble marks on there are the locations where we actually harvested. The GPS unit that is on the machine tracks and calculates acres harvested, whether we covered the entire footprint of the permitted area or we covered the same area multiple times. And so if there's confusion to why we were permitted for a hundred and sixty seven acres, half of that footprint was still pink without any lines on it, it's because we concentrated the efforts where we could find the greatest density in weeds, even though the density was very light compared to twenty twenty two. This year, we harvested forty truck loads of weeds, about sixty five tons, so drastically down from twenty twenty two. From a harvest perspective, you know, it's a bit of a disappointment because you feel like you're mowing your lawn. Today's outgrown than the last time, and you're just not seeing the, the benefit of it. But, you know, in terms of lake health in general, it is a, a good thing. You know, we don't know if the absence of the curly leaf pond weed was due to the drought conditions that we've been having, that washing large amounts of nutrients from too clear lake from storm sewers or adjacent properties, if the thick ice and heavy snowpack hindered the growth of the pond weed. Last year, there was a whole like fluoridone treatment done and we don't know if that chemical treatment had any adverse effect on the curly leaf pond weed. There's quite a number of factors that could have resulted in what happened this year. So the best we can do is attribute it to a win and move forward. In twenty twenty two, the crew was comprised of myself and three seasonal employees. This year, we changed up a little bit and we had three and a half seasonal employees and myself as needed. I would go down in the morning and help them get the equipment and the water and moving, check in on them throughout the course of the day and come back in the afternoon and help them get things wrapped up for the day. What we're seeing is that in twenty twenty two, when we started this, we were late to the game, you know, getting our permit and training from the equipment manufacturer. So we thought that we were late in getting to harvesting weeds. It only lasted less than a month in twenty twenty two. We had hoped that if we got started earlier in twenty twenty three, we'd be able to accomplish more. But what we have found this year, we theoretically only harvested for three weeks again this year and harvested very little in comparison to twenty twenty two. So going forward, is it going to turn into a three to four weekend ever? Or will the conditions change based upon weather, rain, environment, you know, that's hard to say. But we're just trying to forward the information as we get. Again, in your notes there, I broke out in twenty twenty two, the total cost, with the equipment purchase, the outfitting of truck rental, grading a compost yard, labor, and the labor in twenty twenty two was also exponentially more because with the purchase of the equipment, there was a lot of shop time and final preparations and repairs to get that equipment ready to go. And so the disparity in, you know, some of the labor costs comes from that. So you can see in twenty twenty three, you know, the, the cost of it, including the equipment purchase was fairly high, for over five hundred thousand than in twenty twenty three. You know, now that everything, for lack of better terms, is kind of up and running and we had a program, we can see that it became much more affordable, you know, for twenty twenty three. You know, we have a total cost of thirty five thousand, fifty eight dollars and fourteen thousand of that was replacement of an engine on the transport marsh. So short season, but you know what, it, it, the cost was not really like it was in twenty twenty two. Twenty twenty four is coming around the corner, we need to kind of reevaluate our, our labor needs and what we feel that we can garner for seasonal help. It's getting a little bit tougher to put a seasonal job out there that may only last three weeks. We don't know what kind of reception we may get from applicants. But we will work through that this winter and, and come up with something for next year.
What was our three-year projected cost of this endeavor? Was it around seven hundred?
Yeah, there were a couple of numbers that were thrown out there, but it was upwards of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. When you included the cost of the original purchasing, then the subsequent labor costs, granted, the labor costs are obviously declining. And the costs themselves to start the program are much more front blooded than they would be to eighteen. And it goes back to the AIS conversation too, that's obviously something, we've already gotten the authorization from the state that we can utilize AIS dollars to facilitate this program. So that's, that was where my mind was originally going a couple of years ago when pursuing those additional dollars, just discovering that the pot is pretty and highly competitive for those little dollars as they're on. So it's just to decide, when you think about the long-term use potentially of the surplus dollars that are there with the limited ongoing costs that it will incur likely into the future, that's potential.
Thank you, thank you very much. Next is project acceptance and final payment, Wasika County Public Works Facility Improvements.
Morning.
Good morning.
Finally here to ask you guys to accept this project and authorize final payment. This is our fuel lighting and destruction project out at Wasika Shop and then some mold remediation and oxygen. Fuel system came online about a year ago and the canopy was completed earlier in the spring. Just took some time for the client contractor to work out some claims, potential claims with this subs. Aired, which credit to Joseph Company, all of those claims were denied before even getting to the consideration. That was a good job on your part in supporting the owner of the project. The value of work certified or final amount is one million, one hundred and sixty two thousand, four hundred and thirty nine dollars, ten cents. This project had a lot of different things going on between fuel station and the ops work and mold mitigation. It processed four change orders for a total of twenty four thousand, four hundred and thirty nine dollars and ten cents. Three of those were additional costs for things outlined in your packet and we also had a credit come back to us for allowance to go back and buildage of the original contract that we're not needed. So that was nice. Final payment due to the Joseph Company is thirty five thousand, six hundred and ninety six dollars and ninety six cents. And requests and accepts work.
Motion by Commissioner Kristofferson, second by Commissioner Charlesy, it's no discussion. Where are we at then? The, are we, are we good?
The roof, are we good, you feel, for a lot after this work? Or do we still have some work issues?
The roof is patching, other than the ventilation part of it to deal with mold. But so we have a contract with Triggers to kind of annually assess our roof and different kind of different HX systems. They're kind of putting that in five, seven years until we need to replace. It was now about twenty-three years ago.
And I know we've been patching it since I said it.
So most of the mold was related to, there was no reaction to our original construction. No way of moist warm air to escape and remove it. We dealt with that with some of the change order work was to cut into the side of our precast walls and soul movers. We've got now a power ventilation fan constantly drawing air out of there. That is bad potential.
One last question on the building out there. Are we, has anything been done with the furnaces? I can't remember. Is there new furnaces out there or have we just been maintaining the others?
And they also, sure, just also kind of doing inspections sometimes as well.
But I'm against the investment.
We have like the makeup area. Not that that was replaced last time. We're kind of in that period of everything starting to go. It's twenty-three years old. It's going to stand there replacing and a little bit long. It's heavy.
We'll save some money on the waste value.
We did.
All right. Any other discussions? We do have a motion in the second. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next is contract number eight, one, two, three, zero, three. Final acceptance and payment for the Freedom Township Bridge Replacement.
This was the second contract of Midwest Contracting this year. They also did the Jamesville Township box covers. Final earlier this season. This is Freedom Township's bridge on the West County line. So they actually shared their, they're on the hook for twenty thousand dollars towards footwork and engineering work. Share that equally with the New Township over in County. So each of them will have ten thousand dollars contributed to the project. The rest of the project is funded through Regular Town Bridge, which is a portion of random allotment, and then Special Town Bridge. The rest, yes. Midwest performed the work. We did find remnants of an old bridge foundation out there that we had to remove before we could install turnabout covers. And then also some unstable soils in the creek bottoms. Took a little deeper, replaced a little more rocks. So that took a couple of change orders worth a total of eighty-four hundred bucks. And the final amount of project is five hundred and thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars and nine cents, which is one hundred and one percent of our original contract amount, so not too bad. Final payment in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars and fifty-three cents due to Midwest Contracting. Ask you to accept the work and authorize final payment.
We look for a motion on this. I would move to final payment. Is there a second?
There is.
Motion by Commissioner Krause, second by Commissioner Walter. Discussion? Yep. Do you have the cost of construction and the materials is going to be up even more this next year compared to what you're looking at? And what we're up at AMC, it showed quite a substantial increase in oxen colors or anything like that. So but you'll have to really use your pencil to the work to get those estimates close.
That is the, we'll see how I do this winter. I'm going to bring the contract to three, 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 all of our items.
But you've done a good job in the past, so.
Good job, Sam. So thank you.
All right. We have a motion in the second. If there's more than discussion, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries.
Thank you.
Any updates on roads or equipment you want to spill?
Well, our trucks, many orders still. End of first quarter of twenty-twenty-four, some protection. So that was a top agenda item for there today. Those ones into our sign fund downs. Waiting patiently for next board meeting to approve the budget before we start, before we start the whole trigger on some of those items. Otherwise, take advantage of the nice weather. We're not on the snow like we were last year. The guys are working hard on our pitches and excellent construction.
Good deal.
Good.
Anyone else?
It's taking advantage of the weather, do we? Do what we can. Timing is everything as we well know it far ahead.
Saving money.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, two-minute break. Sorry. Two minutes.
Just want to scratch your name on that quick.
Do you know Tim in his touch?
Oh, yeah. Really?
Even so. Day straight. Yeah, as far as, well, please clarify.
That was bad.
Oh, it was bad. If I say one way, it's good. You gotta get smarter. Everybody should talk. Everybody.
I mean, you're really nice.
Chair, you're a great player.
Chairs are like this.
Because one of them is.
Right.
Actually, a public health yesterday. So I just had a mask on and screwed up. Uh, you're in my boat.
I'll ask and then. And you can just leave me out, make the changes. Okay. Yeah, you're welcome.
Once there, it's like, yeah, straight off of the line. I don't know. I think there should be like standing desks at those conferences. It's like, maybe a seat at the cameras and listen to people talk.
All right. Are we ready? All right. G, conditional use permit for the Windy Hills Sportsman's LLC campground. Finally.
No, honestly, it's fun to see. I mean, I work in the outdoors. I work for the party recreational products out of the Alumacraft facility. I'm an engineer. I go through corporate budgeting and all that stuff. And it's so fun to see this side of it. You know, being in big corporations, you only see one side of it. And this is such a, it's just a refreshing thing to see. Well, not, you know, not everything's different in, you know, in corporate versus in your own, in your own company.
Probably way less stuffy and more relaxed.
Exactly, exactly. So thank you very much for hearing our conditional use permit request. My wife and I purchased the Red Bull Sportsman's campground roughly two years ago as a family business. I have two younger kids that have always been looking for summer jobs. They are big into 4H, but this was something to give them, something a little bit more as a family business. When we bought the campground, the one thing that we very quickly saw was there's still a big demand for camping in our county. And even just in southern Minnesota, there is not enough sites out there to get everybody into a site. We typically sit on anywhere from fifteen to twenty requests of, hey, I'm looking for a seasonal site. Can you help me out? So that's been the last two years we've seen that. When we purchased the campground, we did very quickly see hey, we have some open area here that with a little bit of brush hogging, a little bit of cleanup, an extension of a driveway and adding in the features that everybody are looking for, we can open this up to a number of additional people. One, of course, improving our ROI on the investment that we've put out there, but also really just bringing more families together. And that's the one thing, because it's a family business for us, we've also kept it part of the community. And it's great when you start to see all these families come in, enjoy the pool, enjoy being there, bringing the revenue into not only the county, but also into the city of Janesville. That's been fun for us. We've stayed open to the public. We've opened our pool up to the city, the county, everybody. We get a lot of people coming in to swim in our pool. We work with community education for swimming lessons through Janesville, which has been an excellent program. So we've just tried to continue on with that. At any time, on a normal to busy weekend, we will have anywhere from a hundred to two hundred and fifty people in the campground. Those are primarily people coming from outside of our county, outside of our area, and they're buying goods in Janesville. They're buying goods in Wasika. It has been definitely impactful on the city of Janesville. So what we're really asking for is just, one, you know, again, we've been a campground for fifty-plus years. We want to continue on with that. We want to continue to build with it. And we want to add these additional sites to really allow for a few more families to be able to enjoy that with us. Thank you.
So, Mr. Chair, just to walk through some of the due diligence of that process. And thank you, Grant, for the summary there. That's really helpful in context. Obviously, we've been going through some technological gymnastics this morning. So a normal presentation for you, as we typically would. But thank you for the patience there and the technological dysfunction that we've had. But ultimately, the request, as Grant was elaborating, is to expand an existing campground in sections twenty-two and twenty-seven of Janesville Township. This originally came before the planning commission on November second. All of that information is available for you in your packet. The meeting minutes draft has been available on the website since that point in time as well to, for public consumption. It did come with unanimous recommendation from the planning commission as well to be considered by the county board. No major glaring concerns of any kind to cite. So really, the recommendation as it is before you this morning is twofold, that being to consider approval of the criteria set forth by the planning commission in the report therein. And then ultimately, the approval of the conditional use permit itself is substantially in the form that was provided in the report as well too. So we'd be looking for two recommendations for action to the county board as a result of that planning commission process.
All right. So the first one, the action item, will be to hold on the criteria for this, which is so stated here. And you're down, Lord, if you will.
Yeah, well, sorry, Mr. Chair. I should have clarified that as well too. But all of the criteria is listed under the recommendation of the board action as well too. Just for public.
Thank you.
I would move the criteria.
We have a motion to move the criteria. Is there a second?
There is.
But a motion by Commissioner Walter, second by Commissioner Krause. Is there any discussion? I, I maybe can't see it here, but how much are you expanding? Or where's the expansion?
Yeah, so we're expanding roughly thirteen sites. And it is.
Okay. Okay, I was wondering.
Fifteen sites.
Okay.
Fifteen sites, the expansion. Yep, yep.
And that's along the, um.
East side of the.
East side of the campground. So the back, back of the campground is.
Kind of out in the middle of the section.
You know, the road that runs the lake is over there on the west side.
These, all these sites are seasonal.
These would, there will be a couple of them that we try to keep for weekend sites as well. Most of them will be seasonal. We try to keep three, four weekend sites. And that's just for us to test, people upcoming here. And for us, for them to test the campground as well.
Sure. And this is all, is this going back to the Janesville Waste Treatment Plant?
This, we would be adding a mountain septic system to take care of this new area.
Just the new area.
Just the new areas already. Yep.
In the plant.
Yep.
And I would just point out in the, in the recommendations, you can see on number eight, any activity that draws ten was changed to a hundred or more people to the property that are not campers. The planning commission viewed that as necessary because ten would not even allow for the swimming lessons that happen up there. And the campground owners have been great to continue that partnership with Janesville Community Head to allow swimming lessons out there. And that loan breaks more than ten people. And we certainly do want our regulations to get in the way of that great partnership. So and it also allows for them to do some small music events and build some community within their campground, particularly considering it's seasonal camping. So they've got the same families there week after week, enjoying time together. And they're doing some great work out there. I'm happy to see the effect that it has on Janesville.
Thank you. All right. We do have a motion in the second on the floor. If there's no discussion, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion carries on the criteria. Next would be for the CUP. I will move that.
One second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Chris Stock, and a second by Commissioner Walter. Is there any discussion on the CUP? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. That motion also carries.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
That was it for the regular action items. On to administration.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I'll try to be brief this morning, although I tend to say that a lot of times, I think. But I mean, at this time. A number of building conversations, obviously, is happening. Trust been able to look at it constantly. Sheetrock is done in the break room. That looks nice, much cleaner. Removed all of the old papery, wallpaper in the lower level of the, of the core wall too. So there's kind of a mural of the colors right there now. But that'll be cleaned up and painted and finished as well too, just to brighten it up. Next stage of our flooring will happen in two weeks, I believe. That will be completed in, well, it's just, it was contingent. They're lining it up with where the break room process was so they could come in and do it all at one time rather than two weekends. So the sheetrock process should be done, cleaned up and painted by the end of this week. And then to get pulled up for it back in Europe in the next two weeks, certainly before your end. before year end. I'll finish up that, and some insulation, chemistry, finish up, took two. Woodridge will be in within the next week, two week and a half as well, too. He's been prefabricating all of the wood wrapping that will go in the entry, the main entry of the courthouse, uh, with the hopes of just being able to bring it all at once and install it, so it should all be cut and ready to size by the time we move it. Slowly, slowly, getting, getting completed, that'll be a nice update and change. Thank you for the time this morning as well, too. Uh, as I stated, I'll have some additional budget recommendations or scenarios sent out to you at the end of tomorrow. And if, uh, you have any questions, feel free to reach out to me individually, of course, uh, prior to the nineteenth. Mind your roof next Tuesday, you don't need it at this point, obviously. Next Tuesday, public listening sessions, nine thirty and six thirty, nine thirty a.m. and six thirty p.m. Um, this room will be finished. The door is probably scheduled to get installed Monday afternoon or evening towards the back, but that wasn't going to affect the ongoing meeting regardless, so if there, if there'll be mid-installation, they'll just forego it until after Tuesday, if it can be done by Tuesday. But that's really the last thing that is, is left to accomplish at this point of it, and just in general, we hope. You can see that we've got some different displays. This display ties into that room as well, too. They're all connected to the same display, it's just allows people that are sitting up here, you'll see the same thing that's happening, you know, as well as the sound system that's tied into what's happening in there, so it's a good overflow space that's needed potentially, uh, this next Tuesday as well. Thank you again for the insights on the budget standpoint. Are there any other specific things you'd like from me, updates you'd like to hear from me? I'd be happy to discuss or chat through. Or any burning takeaways from your conference over the last couple of days that you'd like for me to follow up on, for you.
Thanks for the reassurance on the technology man. I think everybody walked out of that room going, "Wah!"
Yeah. Scary world, but we've had, uh, CISA, so the, the cyber security branch of Homeland Security, uh, at the county twice this year, uh, for some additional trainings, and those always come with recommendations as well, too. So fortunate to be able to have a partnership with them, and they always give some good insights for best practices in the world of technology that's ever evolving and changing and getting more complicated, typically faster than anyone can respond to it, so the challenges of yesterday are not the challenges of today or tomorrow. Prepare for those as best we can, obviously.
I would give compliments to the chair on the, uh, the AMC honoring Mr. Nelson, you know, at the word of the, the chair, and I don't know who all was involved in that whole process, but, but, so, very nice, very nice, I think that was done, so, yeah.
And I'll, uh, for any of our media friends that would like to get some additional information or pictures from that event, if you can do that, to clarify, Commissioner Nelson was, um, awarded, most honestly, the Outstanding Service Award from the Minnesota Counties, which he's had a long-tenured service relationship with, and, um, so it was nice to be able to have his family in, in, uh, that environment, there present for the award of season as well, too. No additional HR announcements today. If you have anything else to follow up on, it's right up in the mail, but don't have the formal end of for you.
Just wanted to bring up that, the planning and assembly one that we talked about, that Boyer had the absentee member for.
Yes.
Do you, it's as needed on the list, is there, is it one or two meetings a month on Thursday evening? Is it, I mean, it's like...
It's one meeting a month, at the most.
Yeah. And it's Thursday evening?
It's the first, first Thursday, it's the first Thursday, they usually, um, start after the board adjustment, so usually seven or seven-thirty sometimes, it varies depending on how long, or if there's board adjustment, and if they don't have anything, they don't meet.
Then they don't meet.
So I, I think they probably met six to eight times this year, they have not met every month.
No.
So the time they haven't met isn't huge. There is a learning curve, because of the residency to the UDC, which we all love. But it would be great to have a full board there.
Yeah, is there anyone else, are there any other vacancies, open spots, so?
I don't know, that's something that Mommy and Shelley are, you know, because there are, there's no longer terms limits on that, but it is an appointment, and it's a three-year appointment, so we, I don't know if we have to reappoint.
Yeah, I, I have a list. Um, we'll have one individual coming off the planning commission, we'll have one individual coming off the EDA, and I believe one from board of adjustments as well. And we were already missing one from the planning commission. So there was some possibility that the one coming off of the EDA may be interested in the planning commission, it's just three spots, one, so hopefully we can slide that individual later.
You got the message, John?
Yes.
And the folks, the person coming out the planning commission or board of adjustment, do they have any interest in reappointing?
Um, I don't think so.
Okay.
So that's Russ, and he's already on the EDA as well.
Okay.
And I did talk... Russ is, Russ is going off the commission.
That was my understanding.
Planning commission.
By the commission.
No, Russ Frederick. I just had a conversation with him last week, and he said he would stay.
Mark Summers is going to stay.
Okay, well, maybe that's changed then as well.
I will follow up with you.
Or maybe, maybe the notes were skewed, and he was planning on coming off of the EDA, but...
Okay, I'll, I'll follow up.
I'll, 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 because Mark said sure.
He said for sure.
Okay, okay.
All right.
So then still potentially the individual coming up with the EDA resides in District Three would be able to...
Speaking of appointments, I think I sent you an email about, we're gonna need to, um, have someone else serve on the, um, South Central Minnesota Multi-County Housing HRA, Al Graham's is coming on, um, and putting in his resignation, uh, now that Amberfield isn't there anymore. And we could have two commissioners there on that board, um, that's what most of the other counties do. Or we can appoint someone, but it's kind of a niche kind of thing, it's not like, I don't know who we'd have as a county that would have any, um, knowledge base to serve as a citizen.
I did talk to Michael about this, I don't know, do you want me to, or do you want to weigh in on this? The, uh, the, the seven hours worth of training was one that, I didn't know that if I was the person who really cared a lot about that. To have someone do it that would be a, a citizen, I'm not sure about either. Are, are we, is there a reason for it? Is there a reason that we're, no, is there a reason we're even in a...
Yes, there is. Um, and, and actually, I could, um, and I think I shared with you, um, the, the director over there, I had that particular question for her earlier in the year, now that Amberfield is gone, and they do indeed work with, um, work with, uh, our, uh, current boards to place and support people in this county. Um, and she had statistics for me about, uh, economic impact, um, how much money comes here, how many people they place in this county, and it was way more than I thought it was gonna be. I thought if there wasn't Amberfield, maybe there wasn't a reason to do it. Um, so I can dig that back out and we can sort of look at it.
I'm looking at it, it'd be in the know on that, so we can get this figured out that...
I mean, if we're not going to...
What was the question?
If we're not going, if, I, I think that kind, that would, first of all, we have to get out of a joint powers agreement that we're in, which can happen. Second of all, um, I think with our, um, with our housing trust fund and some of those things, uh, we, we obviously need to take a more comprehensive look holistically at housing, because there's that HRA organization, there's the, um, the city-owned one in Janesville. Janesville just authorized a, a plan for another thirteen lots on the west side of Janesville. We know there's not enough housing here, um, and particularly, um, workforce housing. So I think, I think we want to think about that kind of holistically, not just, well, this is one more thing and they want us to train for seven hours, what the heck, why are we even there? You know, not that the training, not that I'll ever get that time back, I will not, but, um, I do think, um, and part of the reason for the training was a change in leadership, directorship over there, and we found out there were some holes in how it was being managed that were not up to HUD's standards. So thus, not only did the new director have to do a ton of training, but all us board members got, yay, got to learn a whole lot more about HUD housing.
And which one was that under Commissioner Walter?
South Central Minnesota Multi-County Housing.
Yeah, that's something that the board wants to direct me to go through and view further, I'll, I can do that too, it would be interesting to...
Please give us some information with those statistics and, um... Yeah.
Yeah.
So, Commissioner, were you referring to, um, housing placement, so, within our county, individuals within our county that are helping people find housing, don't have housing?
Or people that, that qualify for vouchers, they administer, they administer the HUD portion of, uh, housing support to people, and there, there are a bunch of them that live here.
So it's not a joint effort with Min Prairie where we just hired that housing placement person?
This is a whole separate thing, although they do interact, I mean, they talk with Min Prairie, and, and Min Prairie approached them about being more involved in, in our, possibly in our trust fund, but part of the reason that didn't happen was because of the limitations at the HRA right now with all this swirling around management over there and, and checking off Amberfield and new staff that's trying to figure out how to get us in compliance with HUD.
I wonder, though, still, if it's just a matter of a phone call, even if nothing else, I mean, someone contacted the HRA, they, something for them to, the program that's been established, the people resources that have been established.
It's two different pots of money. I mean, this is, this is allocation that, that South Central Minnesota Multi-County Housing HRA gets from HUD that's getting spent in Wasika County. It's a totally different...
Federal dollars.
Yeah, it's a total, it's federal dollars that are coming our way that I don't know that we want to give up lightly. Um, I do think we'll, we'll want to look to see what the latest statistics are. Um, and I'll, I'll see if I can't find what she had for me, um, earlier, because it was interesting, I had the exact, why are we doing this?
No, that's simple thinking.
Yeah, yes, it is. All right, people, do we want to, do we want to, are you all right? I'm getting a cold, Walter, I do have a cold. You didn't need any musk, Walter, I'm prepared to do it.
No.
That's food poisoning, not a cold, come on.
Well, I know, I did have some musk, Walter.
Yes.
Yeah, all kinds of it.
Anyways, do you guys want to do, uh, your commissioner reports?
Tell me.
Mine's pretty short. Okay, you can begin. Well, because, uh, go back to the last meeting, which was the nineteenth, was the twenty-first, November, yeah, twenty-first of November, we had the work session ahead of our meeting, and I had Min Prairie, our board. That was a long agenda, and, uh, we, I hope that's not, but I gotta throw Carol back on, because she's gonna come with that kind of an agenda each time we're gonna have to talk. But anyway, you're not, you're the one that's, I was gonna say, anything, you know? No, I probably won't be.
Don't give it to the new member.
Okay, so we had PNC Subcommittee, right, on Monday morning?
What was it?
I was just trying to think of, no, I don't think we did.
It was Friday morning.
It was Friday last Friday. Yeah, I got it in both spots, so we must have canceled it...
Well, canceled.
On Monday and then had it on Friday.
Yeah, from eight to...
On the twenty-fourth, we didn't.
No, you were there.
Right, it was scheduled for seven, for the Monday of that week, you're correct, yes, and we...
And we moved it to Friday. Yeah, so I just didn't move it on my calendar. So then, uh, and then on the twenty-eighth, I went over to Waldorf and was there when they met with the bonding committee. Waldorf has, uh, had put in an application to get some more money for the city, finish up some projects. Same day that they came to Wasika, Michael went over to that one. It came from Wasika out there, so it, uh, that went okay. Rob got kind of a little bit short, because they're always on such a tight time constraint. Anyway, uh, and then I had extension after that. I think, other than, oh, then I had PNC Subcommittee at eight o'clock on Friday at first. And then third, fourth, and fifth, we were up at AMC. You guys know, it was one night, I came away from there with better information than I have in a long time, I think, just from networking with other commissioners and some of the breakout sessions I was in. But that was well worth it. And then that evening on the fifth, I, I sat in with Michael, who gave that presentation to the city council. That's it. Commissioner Walter?
I attended Commissioner Christoperson at Min Prairie the afternoon of November twenty-first. And that was the week of Thanksgiving, so that was an off week for the leadership course I'm taking. Twenty-seventh, uh, I had a meeting with Jane Hartley, um, she asked to, to have some discussion about what an intergovernmental council for the new, um, Department of Children with Families and Youth might look like, um, and getting my perspective from serving on, on Shack. And so we had a good discussion on that. Um, then I had a funding work group, uh, through this, uh, new public health, um, money that's coming to, to community health boards, and we had what would, what would end up to be our final work group on that. Got back to Janesville and time to go to a public hearing on the proposed new sites over there on the west side of Janesville, right along, um, east, or west elevation of the road. And so, um, our county engineer was there, in case there were any questions about the road, because there's a ton of truck traffic on there. And, um, of course, it goes right past my house, too, but adding another, um, twelve to thirteen sites on the north end of that is gonna... But adding another 12 to 13 sites on the north end of that is going to, that road will very quickly in Janesville, go from being more of a truck highway to being a city street. And so going forward, we're going to have to be looking at some point, you know, whenever it comes to for rebuild, that there's curbs and that and those kind of things. So that's going to, that's going to change that road a lot. 28th was a Shack leadership meeting. Came back to Wasika for when the Senate Capital Investment Committee came to the city and was there and got a chance to listen to the pitch. Joined Christopherson at Extension. The, my leadership course keeps going and I met on Wednesday with, that building committee met on the 29th. I met with Commissioner Hargit, then Brian and Michael. On the 29th, I went off to South Central Multi-County HRA. And that's when Alvin let me know that he would not be continuing there after the first of the year. That does only mean every other month, it's not a month and a year. So. Then, what's that, which one? The HRA. Oh. On the 30th, I went off to, to the NICO board meeting up in the Twin Cities. Before joining them, I met with my co-chairs on this funding work group to get our final presentation ready. Then I spent Thursday evening, Friday and Saturday morning at the NICO board meeting. I was honored to give the invocation to open the board meeting and got a chance to network with all kinds of folks there, which was great. Boy, AMC is top-notch. I'm here to a lot of state organizations work with, which I'm. And just like you guys, I was up at AMC. Did a lot of interesting things there. Got a chance to go to a child protection board meeting over at the Capitol. And I know a lot by watching that. Glad to be there to, to give the award for Commissioner Nelson. And yesterday morning, finished off with a business meeting there and then headed off to Shack. And I'm happy to say that Shack recommended to forward the funding formula that the work group came up with onto the commission. And so that will make considerable new investment from the state in our community health board to expand foundational public health responsibility services that we provide. So we're going to be doing more work, but we're going to be doing it with state money, which is way better than unfunded mandates. And here we are. Tonight, I've got a truth and taxation for the library board over in the center.
Where's the trophy?
Mine is nice and short. Yeah, last Tuesday, we met with the sheriff, had the work session, board meeting. And then the 27th, HRC, I think HRC's, what does that mean? It's going to be right around four percent, three to four percent.
That was it?
That was the budget increase.
That was the budget, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
You weren't there, were you?
Yeah, I wasn't there, but you were.
You were attending another meeting in the cities.
I could have just went and had, just go to that football game. I was at the Vikings game.
Oh.
Which was depressing.
Yeah. What'd you think of the stadium?
That's the first time I'd been in it, so yeah, it's nice, no doubt.
So then on the December 1st, P and Z, from eight to, it seemed like, covered a lot of stuff. And then, yeah, AMC on Sunday, the fourth on Monday, Tuesday. At AOC, I went to, of course, I went to a few drainage, drainage seminars. And I had forgotten that it's every five years that a ditch has to be inspected. And I don't know if that includes tile or not. Then I also talked to Kevin Powell. And I think Doug had mentioned about the drainage DB, at least getting some information out to the public as far as the projects or the things that we're doing, just so we're, just we're advertising just a little bit, showing the public that we're doing something instead of keeping it all to ourselves and that.
A little more transparency?
Sure, yeah, a little more transparency. And I think we should visit. Kevin showed me some examples of what they're doing in the world. But maybe that's, maybe what we should be doing. And he had several interest groups that were, he knew that would be, could delay a project. And if they're, if they know a little bit about it, then they would be delaying projects. And that's what the guy Chuck Brundle from ISG mentioned, too, who wants these interest groups, they always come in at the tail end. And then, you know, it's just like having a re-germination. The whole process slows down.
Yes.
So trying to get out of the forefront, letting them know that we're trying to work with them. But yeah, it's keeping a safe distance type of thing, so. Anyway, we should check into that. And then this morning, oh, yeah, yesterday, I missed the prism. So that was, Michael went, so I'm sure that was good and you shared good information there. And then this morning, we met with the sheriff, which really went well. And the work session, and then tomorrow, tomorrow's Friday, right? Yeah, holiday parties tomorrow night.
Yes.
So I should, I should take that back. It's Beth's holiday party tomorrow night. What time does that start?
I don't know, 5:30?
Like noon in the courthouse.
Noon in the courthouse? So, and Doug and I were happy that we got rooms. Hotel, where we go. Doug, we thought we might have to sleep in the lobby, but Beth failed us out.
Covered.
Well, we didn't pass this, this path. So she had to call in.
Hey, I rode the elevator up and down for about seven minutes before I figured out you had your roof key to head down. There were people getting on and off, and I'm like, but I want to go to this one. There were people going all over and I'm sitting there going, why doesn't my? So I got out of one elevator, I was on the 23rd floor, and gotten another one, and the same thing happened. I'm like, it doesn't like floor 11. Why?
There wasn't no floor 11.
Yeah. Oh, man.
People were getting on and off, thought you were the.
Yeah, I'm sitting there going, how do you go? This one, and then this one.
The elevator boy.
And he goes, you got your roof key here, you got your roof key. Yeah, that was cool. All right, I'm done. 21st, yep, sheriff, work session, board. Then the annual Ag Society meeting, 7:00 p.m., and then the Fair Board meeting. The 28th was 2:20 at City Hall for the Senate Bonding Group. The 29th was Courthouse Building and Grounds Noon Meeting. I did not go to the SummerX meeting last Friday. Then we were at AMC. I did not go to W and L A yesterday. So that brings us to today. I should have talked to Jim, that LRIP is due tomorrow. Does anyone else, anyone knows? Freedom Town, Joe. I wonder, do they know that deadline is happening?
I believe so. I've talked to them within the last 10 days. You haven't heard any more of that, have you? Should have asked Jim, but yeah.
I think I'll just shoot him a line and make sure Rodney gets it. It's all I had. AMC was good, good information, a lot of sitting, but good. All right. There's nothing more to come for the board, so move. Second, motion on the second. Almost in favor, aye?
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign, motion carried, adjourned.